Is anybody willing to do the invocation after we do the Pledge of Allegiance? I don't see any clergy present. Absolutely. We got somebody, thank you though. Alright folks, tonight's Planning Commission is now called to order. At this time, please take a moment to turn off your cellphones or put them on vibrate. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation. Thank you. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. She spoke up on your behalf, so. Go ahead, go ahead.
Dear Lord, gracious heavenly Father, we come before you this evening and give thanks for all of our blessings. We asked heavenly Father you would be here with us tonight as this board considers actions for this community. Lord, we ask a special blessing on officials in our community that we can move forward, that we'll be safe and creative in attracting jobs to our community and a better quality of life. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Madam Secretary, will you roll call us in, please?
Okay, Commissioner Trumbull.
Here.
Commissioner Macedonio.
Here.
Vice Chair Elms.
Here.
Commissioner Creighton.
Here.
And Commissioner Hogan is absent tonight.
That is correct, thank you. I would like a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye, Father.
Opposed? Abstained? Alright. Planning Secretary, any reports or late communications? Or staff?
No, Mr. Chairman, we have none.
Thank you. At this time, I will open it up for public business from the floor. Members of the public are welcome to address the Planning Commission only on those items that are not on tonight's agenda. Each member of the public will be given three minutes to speak. If you have anything to say, please come on up. Seeing none? Okay, we'll move on. Consent calendar. On the consent calendar is the approval of May 21, 2019, Planning Commission minutes. Before, are there any comments by the commissioners?
I have none.
No.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none. Can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Alright. This is gonna go really quick. Tonight, we have three public hearings. The first is a CUP and then two zone changes. First up is public hearing, conditional use permit 19-2. Declare the public hearing open. The zone, the, we are here to consider approving a conditional use permit 19-02 for cannabis storefront and delivery dispensary located at 6508 California City Boulevard. Staff?
Yes. Chairman Creighton and members of the commission, this is the time and the place to consider a conditional use permit. The intent is for a conditional use permit for cannabis dispensary for both retail sales or storefront, it's called, along with a dispensary. The applicant is Rick Jones. The, actually, I'm sorry, the applicant is California City Supply LLC, doing business as direct, driven direct, and the owner is Rick Jones. The zoning is C2, community commercial. You may recall when we reviewed the cannabis, the new cannabis section of the city municipal code, Article 29 requires that a conditional use permit must be received for all cannabis dispensaries, either storefront or delivery that are located within C2, commercial. You can also have them in C4 or C5. This happens to be C2. If you could just bear with me for a few moments while Sean brings up the PowerPoint.
They didn't pay the wifi bill, though. That's the problem. I've been pushing for an upgrade to this place for three years. I know, they're working on it, but it's very slow. We have laptops in front of us that we have no idea what to do with them.
Okay. So we've already had business from floor and consent calendar, and now, before your very eyes, is this conditional use permit? The location is 6508 California City Boulevard, and the applicant who was mentioned before is California City Supply LLC. The owner is Rick Jones. The location, this is an air photo of the site. The site actually has been applied for two properties adjacent to each other. They're both 1.22 acres, and because of a, we'll get to this later, but the community development director's insistence that Mr. Jones provide more parking, it's including a second lot that is also owned by Mr. Jones to the immediate east. So again, these first two lots that comprise the immediate site are 1.22 acres each, and this third lot is 2.39 acres. It's currently vacant. So, a little closer view of the facility. The current building is 2,101 square feet. The current building, well, the proposed, these are gonna be the proposed numbers for square footage. The hair salon is going to occupy 455 square feet. The gun shop will be reduced in size, and it'll take up about 719 square feet. And the proposed retail dispensary, almost 1,000 square feet. A second building, Phase 2, is being proposed. It is, on the site plan, it's identified as being 50 by 100, which comes out to 5,000 square feet. Although, it looks a little smaller in the site plan, so I don't know if it's drawn to scale. But again, the 50 by 100 would give us 5,000 square feet, and it's our understanding that it's primarily gonna be a garage to have some of the vehicles for the delivery dispensary along with some of the product. So, this is a zoning map. Zoning's very critical, of course, and this is the existing building, the 2,100 square foot building. Bear in mind that the cannabis ordinance indicates that dispensaries must be a minimum of 200 feet from any residential zoning. And this is, California City Boulevard, the right of way is 150 feet, and you add at least another 100 feet setback to the building, so there is more than 200 linear feet. Also, the ordinance requires that the facility be a minimum of 1,000 feet from any schools, churches, or daycare centers with nine or more students, and there were none, there are none, within the neighborhood. So, here is the proposed site plan, and with, Mr. Jones is proposing to modify the current parking. The current parking, you've actually got some 90-degree angle parking, and currently, as it works, it's parallel parking. I don't know why you couldn't remember the name, but...
That's angled parking.
Well, it's being proposed, yeah.
What's showing angled, but he's gonna go for straight in?
No, just the, well, straight in is gonna remain in front of the building.
Gotcha.
What I was trying to say is, right now, you have parallel parking on the side, but that's being proposed, easier for the average driver to have angled parking. Parking requirements, as in, the beauty shop, according to our ordinance, you have to have a minimum of two spaces for each beautician, or, two spaces, parking spaces for each beautician, or a minimum of four spaces for each beauty shop. So if you take that as a four, then you look at the gun shop, 710 square feet, one space per 300 square foot of retail, that would require, actually rounded it off to about three parking spaces. And then the cannabis dispensary, 927 square feet, one space per 300 for the retail, you'd get a total of four. And presto, you get a requirement of 11 spaces. But again, it's our contention on the staff that the demand for parking is gonna exceed the 12 parking spaces that they have right now. We just believe that it would be creating an unsafe situation to have less than at least 20 parking spaces for this facility. And so how that's going to work out is, right now, this would be the 12 parking spaces in the front, and Mr. Jones' site plan actually provides more than ample parking spaces on the lot to the immediate east, and the staff is recommending that just half of that be put into, because we think that would be sufficient. So if you were to configure that, you wouldn't have to use the back portion for parking, but the front portion clearly is overflow parking, would be recommended. So very quickly, I'll go through the conditions of approval. There are a total of 30 proposed conditions of approval. The first have to do with administrative conditions of approval. And these are pretty boilerplate, they just require adherence to all city municipal laws, state laws, so on and so forth. I'm not gonna recite all the conditions of approval, but, you know, just give you an example, this conditional use permit, number nine, may be reviewed at the discretion of the police department, subject to random inspections. There also, we're proposing planning conditions. A total of three planning conditions has to do with requirements for outdoor lighting, trash storage. It indicates that the applicant developer shall construct a trash enclosure, which Mr. Jones has agreed to do. And also, that all new signs must be in conformance with the city's sign ordinance, because it's our understanding that a new monument sign will be placed on this site, and also, because of the new business, there will be new, probably panel signs at the business itself. And finally, the most extensive conditions have to do with public work and engineering conditions. I just might call your attention to some of those. Number 15, the safety and security of the project must satisfy local, state, federal, OSHA ordinances. The developer shall dedicate a public utility easement. I talked with the contract engineer about that, and that's really not necessary unless there were some additional roadwork, and we don't see at the immediate time a necessity for a deceleration lane. I wanted to talk about that there. Although, it was pointed out to me that there was a pretty serious flood here in 2010. Does everybody remember that?
Yeah, it came down pretty heavy down CCD.
So, any work in the roadway, particularly in the form of, say, a deceleration lane onto the property, might constitute some concern about the amount of grading and any alterations to the road as it currently exists? There is a...
Are there gonna be a left turn lane and a right turn lane into the...
Yes, well, right now, the way it's striped, it's striped with...
We haven't got the commissioner questions yet. Let him give the staff report first.
Almost, almost completed. Right now, there is a double yellow line if you wanted to make a left-hand turn. If you're coming from town and you're proceeding westbound and you wanted to turn into the store, you'd probably be violating the vehicle code, because you shouldn't be turning against the double yellow line. Mr. Jones tells me that it was different at one point in the past, and nobody seems to know why it was reconfigured, but we would recommend that, well, the condition specifically, number 26, says that site access along California City Boulevard shall be developed with a left-turn deceleration lane to be designed in accordance with the current Caltrans Highway Design Manual with structural section TI-9, providing a striping plan. That is pretty much the gist of our staff presentation. The staff does recommend that the Planning Commission approve this proposal, and we'd be very pleased to answer any questions that the Planning Commission may have. That would conclude our staff report.
Alright, thank you. At this time, the commission will ask questions of staff and a proponent. Commissioner Trumbull.
The tents, parking, parking places for the people that work there, how close is that to the roadway?
The parking places...
This is Cal City Boulevard.
Okay, and Mr. Jones can correct me, but it's my understanding that the proposal will be to put some parking spaces behind the existing building for the employees. So, that would be quite a ways from the existing roadway, the employee parking.
That's correct. To the rear of the building, we were, we're gonna put all of our employee parking there, allowing more parking for the public in the front.
Okay. As I say, that's pretty, pretty tight there to...
We are going to widen, where the asphalt is now, we're gonna widen it approximately 25 feet on one side and approximately 6 feet on the other to take up the full width of the property, which will allow more parking to the, to the east side where he was talking about, we could put them on a 90-degree angle, pull them straight in, because you'll have a wide area to swing them in. And then we will have the overflow parking on the next lot in the event. We have a little bet going that he thinks there'll be 400 people visit the store, and I don't think so, but we hope so. But with that being said, if there is an overflow issue, then, then we will have the off-site, which they'll just come directly around, they will not enter back onto the Boulevard, they'll just come onto the side lot.
Is there gonna be armed security in the...
There will be, there'll be three armed security during the time the store is opened, because we want the people to feel safe from the time they come out the Boulevard to the time they leave. We won't allow any loitering or hanging out in the parking lot. I don't wanna sound mean, but we kinda want them in and out. You know, we kinda want them to come in, do their business, and go on about their business.
They can get their hair done at the same time.
They can get their hair done, maybe we'll give them a little, do some nails or something.
Protect themselves away home.
Yeah. Commissioner, Commissioner Trumbull, any more questions? Alright. Commissioner Macedonio.
You know, I think the only thing that doesn't bother me, but it's just the, you know, deceleration lane and the acceleration lane, that's a fairly dangerous part of Cal City Boulevard anyway, because people are coming down the road at 55 plus, and they're supposed to slow down way before that to 45, and they don't. So if they decide they're gonna turn into your place, whether to get a haircut, a gun, or some, you know, cannabis...
There is a deceleration lane there.
He was, he was out visiting the site.
The city hasn't maintained the deceleration lane.
But we will put asphalt in there, you can see where it was, and it kind of, I don't know if it was back when the flood was there, I don't know what happened to it, but it is kinda buckled up, washed out. However, as I do all the, work all the crashes in California City, and there's never been a crash in front of that facility. However, as directly across the street where they turn, I don't know the street that goes to the airport.
Mitchell, yeah.
There's been cars rolled over and hit there.
Yeah, I witnessed one.
Yeah. So, I just know, because we also own a company that works all the accidents and all the impounds for California City. So, there's never been an accident in front of there in years and years and years. I'm not saying it couldn't happen, but an accident can happen anywhere.
Right, yeah. I think that's one of the issues that I have. It's not a break, make or break deal, but then the other thing about the, the parking lot behind the buildings, you don't wanna asphalt that yet, you wanna just put DG on there?
I, I wanna put DG on there until we see kinda how it's going, because, I mean, we all hope that there's tons and tons of people that come there, but as we know from the history of Cal City, that may or may not be true.
Good change.
So I'd rather not spend $50,000, $100,000 in asphalt in the whole thing.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you, that's all.
Mr. Elms?
Yeah, I have a few questions. Under administrative conditions, you have a conditional use permit that's valid for 12 months from the date of approval. After that 12 months is up, is there any other term limit on this conditional use permit? I don't see it anywhere in here.
No, but the ordinance says that he, Amanda and Rick could, if they hadn't initiated their, their project, they could request an extension for that 12 months.
Okay, that's for opening it, that's for building and, but after everything's up and going, there isn't another set of conditions on it, it'll just be open for them to use as long as they want.
As long as they're abiding by the state and local laws.
There's a lot of laws Rip can comply with.
Yeah.
But we're hoping to get it up and rolling real soon, since we do have existing building, we already have, we're just waiting on some front doors, because you're not gonna, like, some people think you're not gonna go through the, the gun store to get to the marijuana store, the dispensary. So, you're gonna come directly in to its own doors, there's a lobby, you sit there, the guard will check, make sure you're there for all the good intent, and then you'll be allowed to go into the main facility. So, that's kinda the way it is, but we're, we've already applied for our state license, we don't see any holdup there. My team has, has got other dispensaries, so we're pretty familiar with the process, and we hope to be up and rolling pretty soon.
Good. Okay, so my other, thank you. So my other question, or more of a statement, on number two, under administrative conditions, you have the massage therapy listed.
That was a misprint.
He wants that.
I pointed that out to them already.
Okay, okay.
We apologize for that.
Alright. Other thing with the, I did notice that you're requesting for us to basically waive the asphalt, and so you could use decomposed material?
Yes, and that was, like he just mentioned, or just asked me, is, the front parking lot is already asphalted. We're going to widen that with asphalt.
Yeah, I heard that.
But the, the side lot and the, the back lot, we wanna use DG until we see if there's really this, a lot of business. If there's not, there's not. The building, the lot that we plan on using directly to the west of it for the overflow, we're going to build a new building there in the near future. So we don't wanna lay asphalt down, just when we bring in underground, we're only gonna tear it back up.
Especially south.
I understand that, though. My only concern is that's in the municipal code, I don't know if that's something that we can override.
Well, almost every, I, I'm also a contractor that's done some of the other build outs out here, and a lot of your churches are not, doesn't have asphalt all the way across. A lot of your facilities that are, we're building currently, the city is not, you know, requiring them to asphalt the roads or any of that right now.
Other cannabis, uh...
Other cannabis parks, we're doing a few of the other ones, I won't mention their names, but I'm a contractor on a few of the other ones.
Okay.
So, yeah, if we over activate it to do all that, then it's, it's very costly. I'm not saying we won't do it in the future, but we just kinda wanna see if it's going to be necessary.
Okay. Very good. My next question is, that the developers should submit a grading plan for the proposed site parking lot to be reviewed. Has that been done yet? Because that's not in the packet.
No.
We have a grading permit.
Well, you did, I understand you pulled the grading permit, but this is for a grading plan actually for the new parking lot?
Okay, so that's not, not for this?
Well, it will be...
We haven't got all site plans yet.
Right.
Site plans haven't been submitted.
Correct.
Okay. And then my last question, since you're up here, I might as well just ask you, regarding the signage and the, the building, I, I think that we're in a really good condition, really good position right now, because we're trying to work on the Boulevard, and so I think that we have a good opportunity to set a precedence for what your building would look like. I'm confident that it's gonna look nice. Are you gonna be developing basically the same style that you have right now? Is that gonna follow through with the next building?
The sign that's in that, the sign that's in that little oval, it was there when I bought the place, that little oval, whatever you wanna call it in front with a couple old signs, I think it looks hideous. So I, I wanna create something more modern. I wanna have, you know, a, a regular, like, we have other properties in Santa Cruz and things, and I wanna maybe put a digital sign up on the top where each store, since there's three businesses there, each store will have it lit, it'll look professional, you won't have all the rocks and the weeds, and, you know, it'll look very clean.
Okay, wonderful. What about your temporary signs?
We are going to put that sign up very quick. What temporary signs?
No, I think she's...
The ones on the wheels.
The temp signs you have now for the gun store.
Oh, the, the light-up sign.
Yeah.
Oh, they'll, they'll probably, I mean, that's just on the trailer, we just put that out there to do it.
Okay.
Just bringing some attention, but we won't need that. And then we plan to stick with kind of the same kinda signage across the top of the building, you know, just new, modern looking signs.
Wonderful. And then just the last question, my, the making that left-hand turn as you're going westbound on that Boulevard, it's kind of an awkward thing, if there's something we can do to just make it more defined for people, that would be excellent.
And one of the things we talked about, and he come down and done a, we walked the location together, and the Boulevard is exact same width all the way down, there is a turn lane going to your, you know, as you're coming into town, going to Mitchell, but for some reason, there's not one going the other way. However, as the Boulevard's the exact same width, so there's no reason, there's no reason why you couldn't just redo the lines, and, and essentially, he agrees with that too, is if you look at arrow photos, if you measure it, it's the same. There's no re, why they took it out, I have no idea, but it's obvious that the business has been there. Why they took it out, I have no idea, but it's obvious that the business has been there, probably one of the first locations in town, DJ hung out there when he was a youngster, so it's been there a long time. So I don't know why that turn didn't exist, but lots of people make that turn illegally, we see it all the time. And there hasn't been an accident there, so I don't see why they couldn't just simply reline it.
Yeah, we need to do something about that, and that, that's it, that was my question, thank you.
Thank you, um, I, I agree with you that all you need to do is re-stripe that and make a left turn coming westbound. I see no problem with that. My concern is making a left turn out of your expanded parking lot.
So the, the parking lot, I don't think he has it.
You make a left turn to go westbound on CCB?
So we're going to have, if you're coming out of the, so the, he'll find it.
It there.
Okay, so if, if he, if he, we're gonna have, if you come out of that, the overflow parking, you must make right turns only.
Okay.
We don't wanna make in a left and somebody else making a left, I mean, it just doesn't make a lot of sense, so the parking lot will have to be full to capacity before they go into overflow parking?
You know people are just gonna park there.
Absolutely, and, and I'm not saying even with all the signs in the world, they're gonna follow it, I mean, I hate to sound mean, but I love accidents, I love a lot of tow trucks, so, uh, the, but it's gonna be right turn only coming out of that facility, or out of the, the side lot.
As opposed to DG, have you considered gravel, less dust? And as you turn on gravel, turn your wheels on gravel, you're not going to, well, you will move some of it around, but I think you'd do more damage on DG than you would on gravel. If you compact gravel pretty well, it'll work better than I thi- I think than DG is for a parking lot, myself. Or if you can get hold of some grindings.
Well, I would love to use grindings, but they're pretty hard to come by now. The, the city has a lot, and I inquired about purchasing theirs at ground the airport, but they don't wanna sell it or for whatever reason.
Check with Granite.
Yeah, the, I did check with Granite, they used to give them away, they don't anymore because they put them on the shoulders of the road. So I'm looking all over, I would much rather use grindings, but out of gra- between gravel and DG, DG normally works better than gravel. Because gravel eventually just pushes into the ground and you still have dirt rising.
The only thing I have a problem with is when you try to stripe DG or gravel, it's gonna go away. It'll, first time we get any water.
Absolutely, yeah, I mean, it, to be honest with you, i- if it, if it is that they're using the overflow parking lot, then we would certainly consider maybe putting, you know, two inches, three inches of asphalt down. But it, we don't even know if we're gonna have that kinda business, so, uh.
If you look at your, your proposed patronage, I broke it down to during the times that you're open, about fourteen customers per hour, based on what, what the proposed patronage was.
Yeah, the, uh.
And that's quite a bit.
And, and we're hoping we have a ton of business, obviously, but, and if that's the case, then we will look into asphalting it. I just don't wanna spend the money to asphalt it if we don't really need to, because we're only gonna tear it back up anyways.
Okay, so we're gonna, you're going to put up a sign for right turn only?
Right turn only.
Actually, that makes, that makes me feel better. And you have considered using Ucaipa as your entrance versus CCB? Just immediately west?
Well, that's, that's not really a, um.
It is an asphalted street, although it hasn't been maintained forever.
Yeah, but it's one, it's like one lane.
It's small, I agree, I agree.
Then the deceleration lane, I don't think goes far enough.
Right, and, and the deceleration lane, when we were down there looking, it doesn't go far enough back.
Okay.
So we had considered that, but also there's a, for flow line, it slopes way down. So they built that road up, and my concern would be is that people's pulling in that, that way and somebody's coming the other way and then you have kinda the standoff situation.
I, I would look, staff, I'd like to know if, when the city engineer looks at the site plans, if he has any concerns with a right turn out of either side of the parking lot? Well, I know there's no issues there now, but you, you are expecting an increased capacity. And I know, well, you're, the forty-five mile an hour speed limit goes about a hundred yards down after, past your place. But people are still doing sixty-five as soon as they hit that spot, so I just, just wanna make sure that the city engineer is okay with it too. If they're okay with it, then I'm okay with it, but the left turn, uh, westbound, it's just a matter of re-stripping, because you have, I agree with it, it's identical, I'm looking at Google Earth right now and it's identical on either side as far as width goes, and it's just a matter of wiping out a stripe and adding another one.
Yeah, and, and I think he agrees too, is we were up there looking at it and it's pretty simple. I don't think anybody would have a, a problem with the right turn, because essentially they're coming out and going, going right.
Shouldn't, shouldn't. I agree. Any other questions from commissioners? All right, thank you, sir. Secretary or staff, any report on any communications sent out?
None.
Okay, thank you. All right, at this time, I'm gonna open it up for public testimony, sir, you can have a seat if you like, or? Let's not all jump, there we go.
Chairman Creighton, commissioners, good evening. Just a couple of brief comments, I think you've done a great job reviewing the property characteristics. I've been to the subject property, I have a lot of property along California City Boulevard, as well as out towards Mitchell. This obviously is an optimum site for a dispensary because of the traffic, because of the visibility and access. And so I would suggest to you that you push this forward. The only comment that I have in terms of additional planning in the future is I do think you'll see a lot more activity here than just a few parking sites. As you know, throughout Kern County, the county has banned cannabis. And so folks are looking for safe access, and I think this spot is our safe access, and so I recommend you push this forward, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman Creighton, commissioners, Karen Macedonio, California City. I just wanna echo some of what's been said about the concern about the acceleration and deceleration. Chairman Creighton, if your estimates are right, and we're looking at fourteen customers an hour.
This is based on what they reported.
But if we're there, that's one car every three minutes. One car every three minutes in and out of Cal City Boulevard at that particular place where we've already got the speeding going on. I would ask if we could take an additional look at Ucaipa as an entrance and an exit and see if there's any way to do that. If the, like you said, if the engineer says it's okay going on Cal City Boulevard, but just to have an extra layer of safety there, because that looks, I hope they're very, very busy. But the busier they are, the more danger we create going in and out of Cal City Boulevard, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I don't mean to be rude, but I am trying to write while you guys are speaking, so if I'm not looking, I apologize.
That's okay, that's all, that's all Hudson. Rick and Amanda are very responsible business people, as well as very successful. And there's been no problems with laws, rules, or regulations that I'm aware of in the, in their other businesses, and they're successful. So I think we should do everything possible to help them be successful in this endeavor. Based on my personal experience and observations, there is no traffic problem at the cannabis dispensaries. That's been true in Rosamund as well as Palm Springs. I go down there on a regular basis to, to visit. And they don't, they don't have those, these imagined problems on ingress and egress, parking, none of that. By, another example even closer was the dispensary that was over on Sierra Highway that was at the former sheriff's station. They had a steady flow, but nothing like is imagined, and there's no requirements for left turns or right turns coming out of that facility. And again, by comparison here in California City, Borax Build has no left turn lanes or right turn lanes and there's a lot more traffic and a heck of a lot larger vehicles. There's no concerns there, so I don't know why there's such a big deal here. Because Rick is going to make sure that there's easy ingress and, and egress and adequate parking for his customers because the average customer spends about five minutes inside of a facility unless they're having a discussion. And so there's absolutely no problem, so.
Can I interrupt you one second, Mr. Hudson? You don't have just one business there. You gotta remember that, you have three businesses.
Well, if you look at Palm Springs, sir.
Forget about Palm Springs, we're not Palm Springs. You can't use Palm Springs as an example. They've got a lot of money to spend on roads and things and, and all that stuff, we don't have that. And as you know, if you've traveled down Cal City Boulevard, going either west or east, people travel fast there. And trying to merge into traffic, if there's no acceleration lane or deceleration lane, it's, there's gonna be some problems. You know, we just had a terrible problem on Noralia, had nothing to do with lanes, but someone ended up dead.
That's rather, that's really unfortunate. However, comparing Palm Springs, aside from the money issue, I'm talking about the traffic issues. There's a heck of a lot more.
You have a thirty-second warning?
Pardon?
Thirty seconds left on your time, sir.
There, there's a heck of a lot more traffic on the streets where dispensaries, as well as cannabis lounges are located. And there's no problems. And I believe my time is up, and I thank you, and let's encourage Rick to be successful.
Thank you, sir.
Jeannie O'Laughlin, California City. Just a couple of comments, I actually work with a dispensary in LA. They do on average about a hundred and thirty customers a day, and they have six parking spots, and they have four employees. So I, I was really interested in, in the number of parking here. So that was one thing I wanted to comment on. Another thing is, I'm also working with the other group, I don't work with Rick and Amanda, but I am working with the other group that has a dispensary. So we're kind of interested in how things go today. The other thing, I have a couple of groups that are down farther on CCB past, or between Barron and Gant. And, you know, those, those turn lanes are much more significant than what we have here, because here you actually have the room with, I think, proper striping to make the turn lane. So, and I'm excited that they're this close to being able to move forward, because a lot of the groups, you know, are taking years to move forward, so I, I would like to encourage you as well to move this forward, because I think they have the best chance of getting us up and running. And I think the first one out the gate is gonna be very important for the whole county to see that we have someone here. I also think that there'll be kind of a novelty at the beginning where people will come, but I think after that, I think mostly what we'll see is a lot more delivery than actually people coming into the store. So I, I support moving this forward, thank you.
Just a couple of quick comments. In LA, do you know on the hundred and thirty per hour, how many, how much is that, is foot traffic or bus traffic?
It's all foot traffic.
Oh, that's a day, right, but it's all foot traffic, okay.
Yeah, 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 and some, it, it's all parking, because in LA is, you know, there's, yeah, so it's all.
We don't have public transportation to speak of, we do have it, but it's not. But the other thing is on the ones between Barron and Grant, those are single-lane roads. So that's where your turn lanes are gonna become an issue, we've already got four lanes here, so it's a lot easier to absorb.
Right, right, yeah.
Thank you.
Keith Middleton, California City. I see a lot of people that travel in by bus, there's a lot of citizens we have that don't have regular transportation, or as we call it, automobiles. Would there be a consideration down the line to make a, a turn in or pull in for a bus to stop very close to the dispensary?
There, there is a plan just at Yerba, just before Yerba, I believe, to make a formal bus stop for current transit.
Because I, I really believe that we're gonna have people, that, that's the only way they can get here and they'll do anything they can to get stopped.
You might consider a sidewalk from there to your place.
You know, that, that's, that's something I might consider, making a spot large enough for that.
That's Kern County, that's not my purview, not our purview, we can't tell a bus where to stop.
Well, I realize that, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Keith. Anybody else? All right.
This is Debbie Grimshaw, I'm very excited for them to get started. I just have one thought, why not just have a stop sign at Mitchell, a four-way stop, Mitchell and Ucaipa?
Again, that's not our purview.
I know, I mean, in order to slow the traffic down. I love the parking spaces, I love the right turn only signs, I think it all works, their, their site plan works. But for the city to slow down the traffic, put a stop sign there, and it kinda stops all those extra speeding cars, that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
I, I wouldn't disagree with you, but it's not up to us to, to initiate that. Anybody else? All right, at this time, I'd like a motion to close public testimony.
Make a motion to close public testimony.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? All right, commissioner of discussion. Anybody like to speak?
I was just, being ex-law enforcement, I was worried about holdups and that sort of type of thing, but if you're gonna have armed security, plus you got the gun shop there too. You have plenty of ammo, anyway. I don't know if the other, in other cities, if they've had any problems with people holding them up or, or stealing or thefts and what have you, so. Now, is, they're going to be, there's gonna be armed security?
Yes.
Yes.
And especially as in protecting the elite in, in LA, so most all of our guards are ex-law enforcement and they're all, and we also are certified trainers.
The store is gonna have a lobby access area that is controlled to actually get from the lobby waiting area, once you've checked in with your ID into the actual store. So there's gonna be three armed security on site. One will be roving the parking lot lobby area, another one will be stationed in, completely inside the store, and then the third will be mobile throughout the entire premises, so it's gonna be controlled.
Oh, yeah, and to answer your question, yeah, some of them have been robbed. Roseman, he was robbed shortly after I left the store, probably thinks it was me did it, but I questioned why he didn't have him approaching them, so we'll have a security guard roam on the outside. And then busy days, we'll call in additional if needed.
What are the hours gonna be now?
They're gonna be from eight, eight to ten?
Maximum, yeah.
And our gun store is currently open till eight o'clock at night, one time we had it open even later. Same thing, because everybody thought the gun store would be robbed, but as everybody knows, it's probably stupid to rob a gun store. Eight to nine.
The permit's gonna allow you to run from eight to ten, but you can make your own hours in between there.
Yeah, the state regulates the times you can be open.
But the city had put on here specifically nine, is that under the conditions?
No, that's under your proposal.
Oh, okay, so that's probably a typo, it should've been ten.
Yeah, so I think that, that, the state allows us to work till ten o'clock if needed, so between all the liberty and everything can run, operate up to ten o'clock at PM. Yeah, I mean, it's just a, probably a typo.
What's the name of your guard?
Fast response security, those are the elite protection. So fast response, they also guard some of, I won't mention the names, but one of the facilities out here got robbed for quite a bit of money. And he didn't have security, now we've moved in security, so he hasn't been, hasn't had no problems. I mean, as, everybody knows, it's optional for the growers to have it or not, they changed the laws on that. So some of them do have armed guards, and we, we own the company that provides some guards.
Which is the gun store, it's technically, we're the security company, the guns are incidental to the security company.
Yeah.
Guard doesn't have a gun, he can get one from the gun shop.
I don't have guards, is, you know, there's a place for them, but but yeah, we will have guards, and they'll, they'll roam all around to make sure everybody feels safe as they come in and make sure that we don't have nobody roaming about or anything like that.
That's good, that's good.
I don't have any more questions, I think they were all answered, asked.
Yeah, I, I don't have any questions they've answered.
Um, my only comment is, as long as- My only comment is as long as a, the city engineer is okay with your site plans, I'm good with it. You have a lot of conditions to meet as a part of the condition program or the condition permit, CUP. So, anyway, that's it. You can, you can take a seat. We're going to vote. This time, I'd like a motion to, for us to vote on.
I'll make a motion that we, it's up for a vote.
Say again? Should you repeat that?
I'll make a motion that we vote on this project.
Could I get a motion to either approve or disapprove the CUP? All right, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the CUP 19-02 for Jones.
Second it.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Trumbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Macedonio?
Yes.
Vice Chair Elms?
I did want to say something that I, as you know before, that I was opposed to having a dispensary on the Boulevard, but I feel very confident that you guys will have an extremely professional-looking building, so I'm really, really happy about that. Thank you, and I wish you the most success. And yes.
Okay, and Chairman Creighton?
Yes.
Okay, all four yes. Motion carries.
That one's done. Zone change 1910, GPA or General Plan Amendment 1910 for Big West Corp. and Cana Systems Corp. This is to consider a zone change for a 20-acre parcel on 20-Mule Team Parkway. So I'm going to declare the public hearing open. And let's hear, let's hear the staff report.
Good evening, Count and Chairman, Vice Chair. This is for a zone change of a 20-acre parcel. Zone change 19-10 as well as General Plan Amendment 19-10. This parcel is located roughly 1,500 feet away from, do you have the laser pointer? I do. Okay. 1,500 feet east of Ransburg Mohave Road. It's in the red. The red lot up there is the, is the zone that we're looking to change. It's currently ORA, which is Open Space Residential Agriculture. This is basically, as you know, the holding zone for the city. This is a zone change to allow for cannabis development. This is a, the map of the vicinity closer into the parcel. This is aerial. As you can see, there is currently no built environment in the area other than the RV dump site just down the road at the Ransburg Mohave intersection. This is another view of the area with the streets highlighted. This is Ransburg Mohave Road here as well as 20-Mule Team. It's going off to Silver Saddle and the western edge of town as well as Borax Bill to the west there and to the prison. This gives you an idea of its proximity to the rest of the city. This is the wastewater treatment plant, here's Central Park. And this is, again, the site, looking at an aerial view. The numbers indicate, the photos taken at the site and the direction of those photos. Here's the photos looking southwest, southeast, as well as west. Here's from the northwest looking west. Here's looking southwest. Here's looking south, north, northeast, and looking east. As well as two corners of the site towards the northwest. Again, you can see there's, there's currently no, no buildings in sight around the area. This is the conceptual site plan. The applicant has noted that a more concrete site plan will be submitted 90 days if this is approved, once it's approved through the city council. This is the current conceptual site plan. The area will be used as a business park for cannabis research and development as well as an employment center. These are the existing infrastructure. This is the handout that the community development director just gave you guys. It's just to show that there are, there's good infrastructure out there. It's a 20-foot main line, I believe, that runs down for water.
20-inch.
20-inch, sorry, not 20-foot, 20-inch. It does have sewer, electricity, and all the utilities you will need to develop this And that concludes Steph's presentation.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the proponent or staff?
I have none.
I have none.
On this conceptual site plan, so they will be developing this, this property?
I can ask the applicant on that.
Evening, Commissioner. So the project plan today is really a land use plan. And so from a land use plan, we'll go out to the guys that are vying for these sites and once approved, put the funding together, put the site plans together for the civils, et cetera. Now, this is the preliminary step tonight.
Yeah, so this is just the zone change to sell this property in order to get a buyer to do that.
And develop, correct. We've got guys trying to get into the site, but it makes no sense without the zone. We also have funding, conditional funding for the site already as well.
Very good. Thank you.
I have a copy of that funding if you'd like to see it.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
No.
You shouldn't have sat down.
Oh, sorry. This is good news, right?
The triangular portion that is slightly to the northwest, crosses 20-Mule Team Road, it looks, in the conceptual site plan, you don't show anything proposed there, but once you get across the Parkway, there's like little or nothing that you could do with that. So I assume that you're going to encourage the others not to build over there?
Yeah, initially I was thinking it would be good signage.
Why would you have signage on the same side of the road that you're on?
Well, if you're going back and forth. Well, signage has all kinds of advantages, so it may not be signage particular to our industry, but signage for other businesses in the community.
Thought.
There are other businesses that are, again, trying to vie to get into these locations because of the OHV and otherwise. Some of that we're going to bring forward a little bit later on, but folks are interested in this area.
Okay. And we heard last, last meeting that OHV won't be, won't be affecting this area.
We have the traffic through, and so reaching those folks could be an opportunity for us.
True. All right, thank you. I don't have any other questions.
And I apologize, I forgot to mention as well, these are the two zone changes that were, the one zone change, I should say, that was completed in 1908 and two weeks ago at that planning commission meeting. So this zone change as well as the next one that public hearing number three will be on, straddle these, this zone change.
Right. Staff, any, any reports on any communications?
Not on this one.
All right. At this time, I'll open it up for public testimony.
Jeanie O'Laughlin, and I'm going to try to stand far away from DJ when I ask this question, but I don't see any turn lanes on here. Do they not have to do turn lanes down here?
Well, keep in mind, keep in mind, that's conceptual and they will have to abide by all traffic laws. So they'll, will probably have to develop a turn lane both ways.
Thank you.
Good evening again, Commissioners. Al Hudson. This is prime real estate for the cannabis development because as we all know, the other investors have run into problems with water and, and power. So yes, let's go ahead and fast-track the approval, the approval process on this and the, as well as the next one, so that you can get, get things going and get some tax revenue coming into the city because other developers, it's been three years and we still don't have any money coming in. So this is prime. DJ has his funding in line. The only thing that we need is a startup date. So let's fast-track this through and get it done and over with. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman, may I speak to the future development of the deceleration lanes, et cetera, turn lanes? So if you look at 20-Mule Team Parkway, it's currently called out at 200 feet. The development code, as I understand it, only requires 120 feet. So there's a ton of extra space there for that future planning as well.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anybody else from the public? Can I get a motion to close public testimony?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? All right, at this time, Commissioner of Discussion, anybody have any thoughts?
I have none. I don't think there's any need to actually, from my standpoint.
Okay. Commissioner Elms?
Comments?
And neither do I. All right, so at this time, a motion to approve or disapprove.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
You need, got to be a little bit more specific.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Zone change.
Zone change.
19-10.
19-10.
General Plan Amendment 19-10.
General Plan Amendment 19-10.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Trumbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Macedonio?
Yes.
Vice Chair Elms?
Yes.
And Chairman Creighton?
Yes.
Four yeses, motion carries.
Okay, that one's done. One more, folks.
All right, this is a, as I mentioned previously, another zone change as well as General Plan Amendment 19-11. So that's zone change 19-11 as well as General Plan Amendment 19-11. This is a rezone from residential medium density to M1 zone change, so R1 to M1. The same applicants, Big West Corporation as well as Cana Systems Corporation. This is the same vicinity map, only the colors are a little switched to show the, this is 19-10, that was just approved, and this is the current site, 19-11, we're speaking about. Again, they do straddle 19-08, that was approved, last planning commission meeting two weeks ago. This is the, the map of the direct surrounding area, directly surrounding area. It's surrounded by a state residential, which is R4. To the south, to the north is the ORA zone, the holding zone, as well as 19-08, which is now M1. Well, as soon as it passes, city council will be 19-1, if it does, I should say. This is the aerial. As you can see, it's all virgin desert out there. You will see from the site photos, top one is looking west, bottom left is looking southwest, bottom right is looking south. Top photo is looking east, bottom left is looking southeast, bottom right is looking Top is looking north, bottom left is looking northeast, bottom right is looking east. And then this is the conceptual site plan. The, the site is 25.9 acres. It's also going to be used for business employment center as well as research and development for cannabis. That's the purpose for the zone change. And additionally, it will have the same infrastructure as the previous zone change, 19-10. Again, this is just up the road from that along the same 20-Mule Team Parkway. And that concludes our, Steph's presentation.
All right, Commissioners, any questions?
I have none.
I have none.
I have the same question that I had with the last one. This is conceptual site plan based on the same merit that we're hoping to get somebody in that they're funding, correct?
That's correct.
I have no questions. Staff, any reports or any communications?
There was one phone call and it was from the property owner, I believe, of one of these lots in this area, just to the east, and they were supportive of it.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'll open it up to public testimony. Anybody who'd like to speak?
Yeah, just real quick. One of the things that we know from economic development is that businesses are looking for shovel-ready sites. And so that's really what this site represents, is a shovel-ready site, meaning that we have the utilities and infrastructure. So in the past several years, I've worked with Rucana Systems, which is the consultant to the industry as well as Big West on the real estate side. Folks that have permits are jammed up. I used many times the phrase, "Buy or beware, know what you're buying. You don't have the characteristics you need, et cetera." And so they come into planning and development and they, and they have these impediments and they're not able to get past them because funding is non-existent without the infrastructure. And then with the funding, then you really have the ability to pay back the funding after you get all the civil engineering done. And so really, there isn't a lot of hope and they struggle mightily to get through the business development so they can actually create the jobs. This is actually an optimum area. In fact, it's the best area I know with 35 years experience in California City. This is the most viable site in the community. And so I regret that we didn't start this earlier. We've been talking with planning and city management for the past year about doing a city-initiated zone change back in December, January, February, March, and we just never got through that. But this will take the lead. We have some to the west of us that are also zone changed. We're really excited about this particular site. We have some pretty dramatic plans here that will create jobs. There's over 400,000 square feet in this business park and could be up to 500,000 square feet. If we're able to work with some of the folks to our south, we'll even be able to increase that. So thank you for your attention. I'd love you to push this through.
Thank you.
Keith Middleton, California City. I just have a question probably from Mr. Dewick. This isn't, this area could be used for anything, not just cannabis. Could we put a, an RV garage in there, for example, or any other type of business or restaurant?
M1 is, takes into consideration a lot of different stuff. You can do anything you could do in commercial.
Just about anything could go in there along with the cannabis business. It could get pretty popular, especially with its proximity to the highway areas. Thank you.
Anybody else? I get a motion to close public testimony.
I'll make the motion to close public testimony.
I'll second that. Guys are taking two all. All up, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Hey, public testimony closed. Commissioner of Discussion, anything you want to discuss, talk about, fly off the handle about?
How big, how many acres is this?
29.
29.
26, excuse me.
Anybody else?
I have nothing.
I have nothing. Can I get a motion, one way or another, so that we can vote?
I'll make a motion that we vote on this ZC 19-11 and GPA 19-11.
Are you, use your motion saying that we want to approve or disapprove?
We want to approve the motion.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second that.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Trumbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Macedonio?
Yes.
Vice Chair Elms?
Yes.
And Chairman Creighton?
Yes.
Four yeses, motion carries.
All right. Sorry about that. Waking myself up, too. Wait, am I going here? Little bit more business to do. Not much. Oh, I'm sorry. We do have a discussion item. I forgot about that. Our discussion item tonight is for housing element policies related to rezoning for light industrial use. Staff, have anything on this? Do you? Why is it on the calendar?
I have no idea. I didn't ask for it.
Does anybody want to discuss the housing element? This could be a long discussion.
Where is it? In our packet?
It's not in the packet. There was no supporting documentation.
So then I will do the Kristoff thing. Mine mill.
I'm going to recommend that we table this for a while.
Yeah, and I'm actually going to a Kern Cog meeting on SB2 that has to do with the housing element tomorrow, so I recommend tabling it as well.
Cool. Bring back some good information, will you please?
Absolutely.
All right, Commissioner Items and Comment. The comments. This portion of the meeting is reserved for Planning Commissioners to present information, announcements, and items that have come to their attention. Short staff responses may be appropriate. The Planning Commission will take no formal action. A Planning Commissioner may request to calendar an item for consideration at a future meeting or refer an item to staff. Commissioner Trumbull?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Macedonio?
Well, the only thing I have is we're short one employee out of the Planning Department. Mitzi is gone. And we need, there's been a freeze on hiring. We need to get our city manager to get one more person in there. They're overwhelmed with all, I mean, this is nothing but's coming down the road. So they need more, you know, more people in there.
I agree with you.
And they've already, it has nothing to do with money because the money's already allocated for that person that's gone.
I think what needs to happen is staff needs to put in a recommendation, basically showing how much you're hurting with Mitzi gone. And they can, I think they can do some magical stuff at council and all you to hire the person. Commissioner Elms? Did you have anything else?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Commissioner Elms?
I have just two things. One, I'd like to bring to attention, what can we do about the sign that is on the building off of Cal City Boulevard, east of Isabella, east of Ace? You have a strip right there, there's a couple of signs that are sharpied.
Cold ice or, yeah.
Yes. Is there, do we have any?
I've spoke with cold enforcement on that, and he's gone in there a few times, but he just says they don't really get anywhere, that they'll find them and they're not paying their fines, and it kind of goes on. But I can put you in touch with him and he'll be able to tell you some details and then...
Specifically, Andrew, what building is that?
It's the building that's right before 79th Street. I can't think of the name of the street. I should have brought that information with me.
It has the two Joshua trees right next to it, in front of it. It's like one of the few commercial sites between...
It's on the south side?
It's on the north side.
On the north side.
Yeah, right before Norelia, between Ace Hardware, on the north side of CCB and Norelia.
It's a residence?
No, it's a commercial, it's a, there's two units in there.
Is that the one where the appliance shop used to be?
Yes.
Okay, I know what you're talking about.
Was it pawn shop?
I don't, I don't know what it is now. It was, it was an appliance store, then I think it was a secondhand store.
Oh, that's where the Realtor was. High Desert Realty was in there.
Okay.
And it's a very nice building.
Yes.
But they've not really attended. The only thing they did was chop down the one Joshua tree.
That's illegal.
My concern is that...
They still have two there.
Oh, there's two? Okay, yeah, no, they took out the sage.
Oh, yeah.
Sage tree, bush there, and they took that out, yeah. But the lot next to it is for sale, correct?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, it's got a giant sign on it.
So if, yeah, if you can put me in contact to see what else can be done. And then my second, my second concern is that as we look at these zone changes as they're coming in, and it's not a reflection of what we're doing right now because the main 20-muil team going up there, you have the power, you have the water, you have all of the, so that makes sense. I could see that those lots moving quickly for sale. But as I drive around Cal City, I see a lot of just lots that just have a realty sign on them, hoping that they'll sell. I understand that that's part of the business. I get that. I understand that. I, I just, maybe we could look at it in a different light, so plan a little bit better so that we're just not flipping these lots and hoping that someone will buy them if they're not usable lots. So maybe that's something that we could look at as they come in.
Yeah, we'll take a look.
That's it.
We'll take a look at that.
Thank you.
All right, I have one thing. I have been working with the city manager and the mayor to have a meeting or workshop between the Commissioners and the council to inform them of what we're looking at, what's on our plate, what we would like to do, what we'd like to work on, and then get feedback from them as to whether or not this is where they want us to go. As we all know, we work for the council. They dictate what we will and won't work on, so I don't want to be spinning our wheels and doing a lot of work for no purpose. So it looks like, if I'm not mistaken, we're going to try to get something... Give me a second here. Probably, I was hoping for the 18th, our next Planning Commission meeting, but I don't think that's going to work out. But I do believe it will be sometime that week. So please keep your, try to keep your calendars open.
Not if you...
Not if what?
I'm going to be away...
Okay, I want all the players involved, and you guys are major players, so we need to work it out so that when we're all available...
And I was hoping, because we did send some emails back and forth, and Anna also should be there along with the council, of course, and all the Commissioners, and after June 25th, 25th is a Tuesday, that's the day I'll be back, and I guess that's a council meeting, Tuesday the 25th?
Yeah, it is.
So, but that would leave wide open Wednesday or Thursday, and there's no rule that says you have to meet at night. If you could find a time late in the afternoon, 3 o'clock, something like that, there's a higher energy level. But hopefully, it might be Wednesday the 26th, Thursday the 27th.
I remember seeing that, yeah. If you, did you send that out to all the Commissioners, those dates?
I did not, but I, we can do that.
If you would, please, and that way they can tell you whether or not they're available during that time. I don't know, has everybody got their city email up? Because we're not supposed to be using our personal email.
Mine's been up for quite a while.
Did you get yours working? Oh, that's right, yours is still under repair, huh? Okay. Yours is good. Mine's good. You check, that's right, you do, you check in every day.
He does.
All right, so if you could give him a paper copy of the, of the dates that you had proposed, and then I'm sure everybody will get a word, and then maybe we can ask Anna or the city manager to work with the council on those same dates. Because I think, I did respond that I was good on all the dates that you proposed.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah. Okay, all right, so just keep that in mind, and the public, this will be a workshop. Public will be welcome. I think, I haven't worked out all the details yet, but I'd kind of like to hold public comment until after we've had our time with the Council, and then be glad to listen to whatever the public has to say. Okay? So with that being said, I'd like a motion that we adjourn.
Staff, staff has comments?
Oh, I'm sorry, staff has comments?
Yes.
Why isn't it in here?
We apologize.
All right.
Real quick, if everyone can look at that camera and wave to YouTube, we are streaming live to YouTube right now. If you want to go to YouTube streaming, YouTube streaming, or sorry, California City Streaming on YouTube, if you count, if you type that in, you'll be able to watch this live or the, and the recording as well. It's the same channel as the city council meeting council.
Okay.
And we will be going, or doing this at every meeting going forward.
Cool.
And additionally, if you haven't been out to City Park lately, I took this picture yesterday. It's in great shape right now, it needs, you know, a little trimming here and there, but it's super green after all. It looks really good, so I highly recommend taking a look.
I was out there a couple of years ago chopping down trees.
A couple of years ago?
Oh, yeah, we had a, we had a big, we had a big push to clear up some of the dead stuff that was around the lake.
Probably grown back by now.
It's probably green, though, too. We need a sign-in sheet, too, by the way.
I got it right here.
All right, and we have a second on adjournment?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
He's got his sign-in sheets. You gotta have the sign-in sheet.
Thank you.
Huh? Yes, she did.
Getting paid.
He did. One in a row.
You wanted this back, yeah?
I like your attitude.
Oh, yes.
I was afraid you were going to say it's June 15th.
You're welcome.
That's my birthday. And the 16th is Father's Day. Sure? You got a pen? Pen goes with it. Is this your pen? Yeah. It's not mine, I mean, it's a city's pen. Just leave it here for those of us that forget to bring one. Now, just give it to Jim. When did you order them? See you next time.
All right. Likely we won't have one on the 18th.
Okay, well, whatever. Sean will send out a notice, right?
Yeah.
Dirt.
You want to bring a roller and you want to roll here on? I'm trying to share. Well, we do have our...
What does this say? Oh, I have a job.
Yeah, except you got to contact, and I don't even know if Ross got his email sent out yet, to be honest with you. I don't know. He was having some issues.
Yeah. I'll talk to him in a bit. But yeah, it sounds like... Just be safe. You know? So...
You have his email.
When is it?
You do have his email.
Can I come back? When I'm telling you what? Oh, okay. But it matters. Sean has sent the... I like how it's more bigger than one. So... Then they need one, right?
All right.
Commercial, uh, very north.
Sean has done the whole.
I like how it's more than one name, as well.
Then they need one, right?
All right.
Door closed, Al.
All right.